It's Jay. Good morning. Welcome to the Muskogee Creek National Council Regular Session Meeting. Today is Saturday, February 25th, 2023. The time is 9:28 a.m. My name is Speaker William Lo, and I call this meeting to order. At this time, I would like to ask Vanessa Van Cleve, Director of Frontier Missions, to come up and say her invocation.
Good morning. When I was little, I, my parents had my babysitter teach me the Lord's Prayer in Native American Sign Language. So I'd like to lead you with that this morning. Creator would not know that years later I would have a daughter who was deaf. And she was terminally ill and passed away when she was eight years old. But I've continued to, to sign and to, to pray in sign language because I believe it's a way that we can kind of have our whole selves in it. And also, when my daughter was little, we would go to the ceremony grounds and she would hear the drum, or she wouldn't hear it, she'd feel it. And she would stop and she would say, "That's God's heart, Mom. That's God's heartbeat." And so I like this version of the Lord's Prayer. It's an indigenous artist. And I want you to listen to as we pray the drums and just consider the heartbeat of Creator. And we ask that right now, God, that you would help us to feel and hear your heartbeat this morning. Father, we ask this morning, God, over these proceedings, that your fire, that you would come and breathe on this council fire. God, that you would come and that your Spirit would fill this room and that every decision made, God, that we would be able to ask. We know that when people are together, it's proven that heartbeats start to come into rhythm with each other. So we ask for your heartbeat over this meeting today. Jesus' name, amen.
Madam Vanessa, we greatly appreciate you and, and you know, for the, everyone in attendance. She is a schoolteacher at the Mighty Shelter School. So it's great to have her here. Next item on the agenda, roll call, National Council Secretary, Alicia Strobel.
Speaker William Lo.
Here.
Galen Cloud.
Hello, guys.
Mary Crawford.
Hello, guys.
Joyce Steer.
Hello, guys.
Patrick Freeman. Oh, excused. Sandra Golden.
Present.
Leonard Gouge.
Here.
Nelson Harjo.
Here.
Joseph Hicks.
Here.
Randall Hicks.
Present.
Robert Huf.
Present.
Anna Marshall.
Present.
Charles McHenry.
Here.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Present.
Daryl Proctor.
Here.
Mark Randolph.
Present.
Speaker, you have 15 present and one excused.
Fifteen present, one excused, that constitutes a quorum. Any business conducted this morning will be valid. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have an emergency session, January 23rd, 2023. Planning session, January 24th, 2023. Pre-agenda quarterly session, January 28th, 2023.
Speaker.
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion for the approval of the minutes with any necessary changes.
Representative Marshall makes a motion to approve the minutes with any necessary changes, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Roll call vote, please.
Anna Marshall.
Yes.
Charles McHenry. Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
Yes.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
Yes.
Sandra Golden.
Yes.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
Yes.
Joseph Hicks.
Yes.
Randall Hicks.
Yes.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor, zero against.
14 in favor, zero against. All the aforementioned minutes have been approved. Onto the order of business. TR-23-021, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, Authorizing the Principal Chief to Execute a U.S. Department of Justice Coordinated Tribal Assistance Solicitation, CTAS. Purpose Area Four, Tribal Justice System Infrastructure Program, TJSI-P, Grant Application for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health. Sponsored, Representative Leonard Gouge.
Speaker, make motion to adopt.
Representative Leonard Gouge makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Second Speaker Robert Huf. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-021 is adopted. TR-23-022, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, Authorizing the Principal Chief to Execute a Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Housing Contract with BVP LLC. Sponsored, Representative Charles McHenry.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Charles McHenry makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Mark Randolph. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing seeing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-022 is adopted. TR-23-023, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, Authorizing the Principal Chief to Execute a Grant Notification Letter and Special Conditions with the National Policing Institute and the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the Rural Violent Crime Reduction Initiative for Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Light Horse Police Department. Sponsored, Representative Mark Randolph.
Motion to adopt.
Representative Mark Randolph makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Charles McHenry. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-023 is adopted. TR-23-024, A Tribal Resolution of the Muskogee Creek Nation, Authorizing the Principal Chief to Submit a Department of Energy Grid Deployment Office National Energy Technology Laboratory Bill Preventing Outages and Enhancing the Resilience of the Electric Grid Formula Grants to States and Indian Tribes for the Benefit of the Muskogee Creek Nation Tribal Utility Authority. Sponsored, Representative Joseph Hicks.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Joseph Hicks makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Galen Cloud. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, TR-23-024 is adopted. NCA-23-002, A Law of the Muskogee Creek Nation, Authorizing the Expenditure of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, Fiscal Year Recovery Funds for the Purchase and Creation of a Muskogee Language Video Game. Sponsored, Representative Galen Cloud. Co-sponsors, Second Speaker Robert Huf and Representative Leonard Gouge.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Second Speaker Robert Huf. Discussion. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like to ask, give some time to Dr. Monty Randall.
Dr. Monty Randall, would you like to come down, sir? Just please ensure the microphone is on and the floor is yours, Dr. Randall.
It's Jay, everyone. Just here to follow up on the Muskogee Language Video Game. I know that there had been some questions on the contract. And actually, if, if there are any questions, maybe we could defer to Mr. Haskins on that. I understand they had a conversation with Sound Puzzle regarding that, that contract. So if they're, and I believe that's where a lot of the questions were coming from, were on that, so.
Yes, sir. Any questions, comments from the council representatives?
I'd like, if our attorney, Mr. Kyle Haskins, would come up.
Yes, sir. Kyle, come on down, sir. The floor is yours.
Good morning. Yes, last Monday, the 20th, I spent a couple of hours with the principals of Sound Puzzle, as well as their attorney. And I walked away with an entirely, a lot of clarification and a different understanding of exactly what we're doing. I, I think there's been some opposition to this, to this process because of a description, a generalized description of this as a game. It's not a game as we all would classically understand a game. There's no shooting, you know, from a kid's context, there's no zombies. There's no scoring, it's not really a competition. You're not competing against the computer, you're proceeding on with levels. It was designed to be a companion to track the College of the Muskogee Creek Nations, their language curriculum and program, which I don't think really was completely understood when we were describing this as a game. Again, it's not a competition. There is, you know, the graphics are incredible. They were clearly designed to try to engage kids. It has somewhat of a cartoon character at the beginning, a robotic figure who's traveling through space and then ends up landing on Earth in pre-colonialization times with the Muskogee Creek Nation. And it's how this little robot engages with early Muskogee Creek people and then also with nature. But there's also a lot of a learning environment that goes on. So as this animated robot walks up to, as he crosses the stream, and by the way, the graphics with regard to nature are very, very realistic. As a matter of fact, they're so realistic, it almost kind of nauseates you a little bit because they're so intense. So you've got this interesting mixture going on, but it's designed to engage kids and keep them involved. But clearly, calling it a game, I think probably got us all off on the wrong foot. And I think the opposition that was out there really kind of came from, you know, we don't want a game, we don't want our kids sitting behind a computer, you know, just spending hours, they should be out getting, you know, exercise. This is not a game, it is a, it's a cultural learning tool. So I wanted to express that, yes, we did come to a number of understandings with regard to the agreement. There's a three-years maintenance agreement with this. Year four, we would pay $12,000 for a maintenance, for them to maintain the program. Year five, we would pay another $12,000 to maintain the program. The reason that that maintenance agreement basically goes out for five years is because technology becomes obsolete in a hurry. Now, the downside, you know, I, I did send out an email to everyone on the 20th after I had that meeting, kind of expressing, you know, where, where we are. Because the agreement seems to suggest that somehow we have interest in intellectual property. Well, we really don't. What, what we have an interest in is what we give to them. And what we give to them are cultural guidance, symbolism, your language, you know, our language. That's what you own, but you own it already. So you're, you're not really retaining anything in the form of any kind of intellectual property. Now, I, I do want to be clear, because we don't own any of that. The group that's put this together and they've invested a lot of time and a lot of money, if you decide not to go forward, they are free to go market it to someone else. So in fact, what you've paid for so far will be used, in essence, as a demo to approach other tribes, to try to convince them to go ahead and buy in. But what you're getting for your money is probably a limited window because of changes in technology, so passage of time is somewhat limited. And but what you're getting is access to a program. And I want you to really think of it that way, rather than as a game. What you're gaining is whoever you choose to give it to, they're getting access to this program so they can engage in this program. And you can control who it goes to, you can say, well, it's going to go to all of our citizens for free. There are certain things that we discussed with regard to making sure there are no viruses that would be passed down, so we wouldn't really want it on our nation's website because it's too easy to, to create, somebody to create problems for that. It would probably go through like, on the internet, when someone could go through and buy an app. This app would be free for those who you want to have it. But please understand, they are free to market it to anyone because they own it. They own this, this engine that was used to create and then all these programs that were used to generate this product that they have. But it's theirs.
Thank you, Colonel.
They own that intellectual property. So they can take it to another tribe and sell it. But what, it wouldn't be identical, what they would get the other tribe to do would be to provide cultural information, their language, and it would be inserted into what this program has with it at this time. It, it, this program has a beginning, you know, feature that's very foundational, that it's going to have an intermediate level and an advanced level. So if there's any questions that you all may have, you know, it was, it was a good conversation that I have with these folks. And they did go ahead and, and they did acquiesce and put into the agreement that they're in agreement that the laws of the Muskogee Creek Nation would apply in our courts. Our venue is appropriate. Those are all good things. We don't have any sovereignty issues. There were some things with regard to indemnification that they removed that I believe personally, in my opinion, those are sovereignty issues because it would obligate our treasury, where our constitution says we don't do that. So the things that we most needed have been removed. But I do just want you to understand that they own this, whether you choose to move forward or not. And what you're getting is access to an educational, a very immersive, well-created, tutorial program that helps someone learn the language.
Yes, sir, thank you. And I will say this before I ask my colleagues for questions is, kudos for getting as detailed as that. I had no idea it was a robot walking around asking creek questions. So thank you, Kyle, for getting so detailed in your research. Council representatives, do we have any questions, comments? Speaker. Representative Hicks, Randall.
Thank you, Speaker. It's for Mr. Randall. Dr. Randall, I'm sorry. Dr. Randall, do you have a plan B should this fail?
Yes.
Would you elaborate, or is that something you need to?
Plan, Plan B is the Muskogee Revitalization Plan that's taking place right now that, you know, I've extended the offer to share with the National Council. There are, you know, the, the thing about the revitalization effort that we're under right now is that, you know, is this video game going to save our language? No. Is an immersion school going to save our language? No. Is it just going to be, you know, more teachers? No. Is it going to be more curriculum redesign? No. It's going to be all of these things. It's going to be, you know, is it going to be $3 million that's going to save our language? No. Is it going to be $5 million? Is it going to be $100,000? You know, this revitalization effort that we're engaging in right now extends to, you know, there, there's a five-year plan right now to get us to an immersion school. And an initial estimate is into the hundreds of, hundreds of millions of dollars to, to initially start it up. And then after that, then to maintain one, we're talking about an annual budget. So yes, there is a Plan B. We, we need a lot more time to discuss that, you know, and I'd be happy to share that with you and, and, and everyone. You know, it's, it's, it involves the College of the Muskogee Nation, it involves the Muskogee, Muskogee Nation Language Program, it involves the National Council, it involves the executive branch, it involves our communities. It, it, it's, it's very, very in-depth. And there, there is a plan to get us to an immersion school because I know that's where we want to be at. And yes, that's going to help us, you know, considerably. But, but yes, there, there are other plans. There's plans B, C, D, E, F, and G, all the way down the line for that, you know?
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Speaker.
Yes, sir. Representative Joseph Hicks.
Yes, Dr. Randall. If this were to pass today, would this be free to all citizens? Or is this just strictly something that y'all would keep at the college and you would have to?
You know, I, I would advocate that it's free to all citizens.
Okay. Another question, how much did y'all work with our language program here to develop this, to come up with this idea and work with them on it?
We've been working with the language program on this revitalization effort considerably. I, I can't really give you, you know, a, a, a specific amount, but we, we've been engaging with the Muskogee Language Program. And that's been the goal, is to, you know, break down those barriers that existed between the college and the, and the tribe and the language programs. And just, just in general, you see those, you know, those, those silos that exist in certain departments and certain areas of, of function. And that's just, we, we've been working to, to try to break those down. So I would say considerably, but I can't give you a specific amount.
So considerably on this video game?
No, maybe not. Hard, hard to say. I mean, that's, that's a tough question to, to ask, how much, you know? You know, I, I mean, and for my part too, I mean, how much have I been working on it? Considerably more than most, but not in any detail. I'm not a game developer, so.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thanks, Speaker.
Representative Cloud.
Hello, Dr. Randall. Do you know the time, if, if this passed today, do you know the timeframe of when this game will be out and be out to our citizens?
I believe they said there's about a 12-month lead time, so they're still got to develop it. And so whenever it gets approved and the green light, we've still got about 12 months of development.
Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Yes, sir, Representative Hicks.
You have it.
Thank you, Speaker. Dr. Randall, I appreciate your, your, and everybody that's been in, dealing with this. But I, I did share this information at a few, or a couple of the communities. And the feedback that I received was, was not in favor of it. And one of the things that concerns me is 3.7 million for an electronic game. Kids, even kids today, if they go out and buy a new video game, it's only new for a certain time and they're going to lose interest. So saying that, I guess, I would rather invest 3.7 million in our language departments or different departments where people that are interested would actually come, opposed to buying something that we're taking a chance on, hoping to gain interest from somebody, if that makes, anyway, I just wanted to share it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Representative Hicks. Kyle, do you have any final comments?
I apologize, I actually kind of should have finished with this. Let's talk about cost very quickly. The $3.7 million is anticipation of this build-out exactly as it has been somewhat presented to them. So if changes are made, they're going to want to be paid for any additional changes. So right now, it's, it's designed for all platforms. You can try to recover some of your money. If you were to decide for some reason that you could have a key where only your citizens could access it, great, they can get it for free. But you can also then charge anyone else, should they want to be able to buy the program or have access or download the program, you can charge them. They're also willing to do a, I started to call it a fee-sharing agreement, but that's not really an accurate description. If we were to go out and convince another tribal nation that this is a great idea, that they should participate in it, to the extent that that nation gives this group money to, in essence, swap out the Muskogee Creek Nation and put in whatever that tribal nation is, their cult, their cultural language, their, whatever information that they provide, then we would get into a fee-sharing agreement where some part of that would be recaptured and come back to us. And that's contingent upon us marketing it to another nation. It's not automatic, that's simply because another nation buys it. You know, if they go out and sell it to them and they market it to them, there's no fee-sharing. It, it would be based upon our efforts. I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. The, the $3.7 million is based upon what the anticipated build-out right now in the way that it is currently structured.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Last comment?
Yes, Speaker.
Yes, Representative Harjo.
So what, what do we have invested in at this point? How much do we have?
That's the, the 20,000 from the language symposium. That, that was at 1% of the demo. So, so, and then everything that, that has been shared up to, you know, and right now, there's only been a video. There was, you know, a, a demo set up for the National Council prior to the symposium. Mr. Randolph and his Golden attended. And that was, and then what was shared at the symposium. So all of that, all of that is at 1% as well. So, so there's still all of that to, to build out. And so the cost right now is 20,000, that's invested.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call vote, please. Second Speaker, Robert Huf, last comment.
Mr. Representative Gouge, I presented this to the COGS community and GLP community. There was no opposition from that at all.
Okay, all right.
Okay, I have a question.
This is the last comment.
Okay.
Representative Marshall.
I have a question for Dr. Randall. You know, you know, I support anything, you know, about revitalization or preservation of the language. On this 3.7 million, maybe you don't know the answer, maybe somebody else does. But when we prioritize the needs for the ARPA funds, what were some of the other priorities outside the language part? Was there other priorities that the, that the, that the nation looked at before they decided to go with this game?
I don't, yeah, I don't have the answer to that.
You don't have the answer to that? Okay. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud.
Yes.
Mary Crawford.
Yes.
Joyce Steer.
No.
Sandra Golden.
No.
Leonard Gouge.
Yes.
Nelson Harjo.
No.
Joseph Hicks.
No.
Randall Hicks.
No.
Robert Huf.
Yes.
Anna Marshall.
No.
Charles McHenry.
Yes.
Thomas Senior Hala Osborne.
Yes.
Daryl Proctor.
No.
Mark Randolph.
Yes.
Speaker, you have a tie, seven in favor, seven against.
Seven in favor, seven against. Goes in a favor, or excuse me, goes into a tie.
Yes. Oh, Speaker William Lo.
No.
Speaker, you have eight, seven in favor, eight against.
Seven in favor, eight against. NCA-23-002 fails. Next item on the agenda, NCA-23- Next item on the agenda, NCA 23-010, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation establishing the Muskogee Nation Resource Center revolving fund for the various activities of the Muskogee Nation Resource Center Office. Sponsor, Representative Mary Crawford.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Mary Crawford makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Deere. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Injehola Osborn?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor, zero against.
14 in favor, zero against. NCA 23-010 is adopted. NCA 23-011, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of funds awarded from the Department of Health and Human Services for the Muskogee Creek Nation Department of Health 988 Trouble Response Project. Sponsor, Representative Leonard Gouge.
Speaker, motion to adopt.
Representative Leonard Gouge makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Injehola Osborn?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor, zero against.
14 in favor, zero against. NCA 23-011 is adopted. NCA 23-012, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing the expenditure of grant funds awarded from the United States Department of Interior Bureau of Reclamation for the benefit of the Office of Environmental Services. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote, please.
Galen Cloud?
Yes.
Mary Crawford?
Yes.
Joyce Steer?
Yes.
Sandra Golden?
Yes.
Leonard Gouge?
Yes.
Nelson Harjo?
Yes.
Joseph Hicks?
Yes.
Randall Hicks?
Yes.
Robert Huff?
Yes.
Anna Marshall?
Yes.
Charles McHenry?
Yes.
Thomas Injehola Osborn?
Yes.
Daryl Proctor?
Yes.
Mark Randolph?
Yes.
Speaker, you have 14 in favor, zero against.
14 in favor, zero against. NCA 23-012 is adopted. NCA 23-013, a law of the Muskogee Creek Nation authorizing a supplemental appropriation for the Muskogee Creek Nation Risk Management Arbor Care Services fiscal year 2023. Sponsor, Representative Galen Cloud.
Speaker, make a motion to adopt.
Representative Galen Cloud makes a motion to adopt, seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Do we have any discussion?
Speaker, also make a motion to amend 735-187 to 748-445 throughout, throughout the legislation.
Okay, throughout the legislation, the amendment from 735-187 will be revised to 748-445 throughout legislation.
Second.
Seconded by Representative Joseph Hicks. Discussion. Do we have any discussion? Representative Hicks.
Thank you, Speaker. Uh, I'd like to ask the sponsor, what's the purpose of doing a fiscal year or for this fiscal year request when we just approved the budgets last month? Speaker, I have, uh, uh... Phil, Mr. Phil Booker here. If he would come down.
Mr. Booker, if you'd like to come down, sir. Just make sure the microphone on, sir, and the floor is yours, Mr. Booker.
Good morning, Council. That's Alan King, our supervisor for Arbor Care. Um, what was the question? I've, I...
Why are we coming and requesting this?
Oh, it's...
When we just approved budgets last month, why wasn't it in the budget?
Okay. Uh, we didn't, it's a budget that I submitted. I submitted two budgets, um, expanded budget and a flat budget. Uh, took it to, you know, through the channels, chain command, and that budget wasn't, wasn't submitted. That's, that's basically all I know about it.
The flat budget was submitted?
Yes.
Gotcha. Yes, sir.
We were asked to do a supplemental budget for some equipment later on to make sure the, the budget monies and stuff were there for all the presented budgets that were being presented at that time during budget call. And then to come up afterwards, after we make sure we have enough to cover existing budgets or the budgets that were turned in afterwards, so.
Okay. So you submitted it to, who did you submit the budget to?
I submitted, uh, to my superior, which is the Department of Interior Affairs, Jesse Allen.
Jesse Allen? Okay. So maybe this question is for Mr. Jesse Allen then? Mr. Jesse Allen, I think it...
Yes.
So, Mr. Jesse Allen, two budgets were presented to you. So you had a choice.
Yes.
And you presented?
No, we, we spoke with chief. Uh, we went through the process like we do with the other, um, departments we had. And, you know, we submitted the budget. You know, as you know, uh, our Arbor Care employees were always competing with the private industry. And so, um, you know, we got the budget and we're trying to keep up with, you know, keep our employees at a, at a rate where we can't compete because they're getting job offers outside of the nation. So after speaking with Mr. Booker, um, we need new equipment. We also need to have a, uh, um, an increase to keep those workers that we currently have. You know, this is a direct service to the citizens, to Arbor Care is, and to the nation. So I felt it was important, uh, to provide that, to keep that, um, that core group of employees, but also to expand as well, um, because, you know, I'll admit, we are behind on Arbor Care, but the only way that we're gonna get caught up is to either, um, just keep the list ongoing or we hire more people to knock down more projects, uh, and knock down that list. So, um, that's why we came to this resolution.
Okay. Thank you. You mentioned that we're competing with private companies.
Yes, sir.
Yet we're a direct service, so...
Well, I'm, I'm saying that other Arbor Care companies, so we, our employees can go and work for private company. I'm saying about employees. We're trying to keep our employees is what, is what I meant.
Okay. And then looking through the paperwork, uh, let me see if I can find it real quick. Anyway, it mentioned... It mentions the salaries are regionally competitive.
Yes.
Yet I don't see any paperwork showing where it's competitive.
Okay. Well, it might not be, might not be included in that, but I know.
It's not in any of my paperwork that I received.
I know Phil and, and, and Alan, they have, they work with, and they're in this industry all the time, so that I trust them and their, and their judgment, so.
Again, I don't have it. No documentation showing. Apples to apples?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a Representative Randolph, please.
Will this money bring in more workers?
Yes, sir.
How many?
The budget that we turned in, there'd be five more positions added. Um, as far as, um, the, um, salaries and stuff, we're going with the salaries and the rates after we're losing people right now to other jobs or taking other jobs or leaving us to go to work other places because of the low salaries. We have not had an increase in salaries in this 2009 to speak of. The increases that we have had, we've eliminated two other positions that we did have that we no longer have to use the money that was in there for those position to give the people that we had a raise. So that's eliminated two positions right now. We've had about 34, $32,000, I think it was, left in our budget, and I would have to divide that out amongst six, seven people. Uh, as of about three weeks ago, we lost another worker. I said we wanted five positions. We're needing six now, but we do have that salary included in there because it was already an existing.
Great. Thank you.
That's where we're at right now.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Any other comments on the motion that's on the floor right now? Specifically to the motion on the floor. Right now, the motion on the floor is to change the amount throughout the legislation to 748-445. Any other discussion? Yes, Representative Gauze.
This amount you requested, I understand what you're trying to do, but my concern is would you be coming back in three months asking for, for more money?
Uh, no, sir. This is the first time we've ever came and asked for any money, and I, I don't see us doing that in the future. Hopefully, if we could get this, I mean, it should put us up there with comparable rates with the outside industry, so we shouldn't be losing anybody since we do have benefits and most of these other places don't have the benefits that we have. When we started this, um, venture here on, uh, for client services that we're doing, uh, we didn't have any, um, problems keeping up with the other people's rates and stuff. We were comparable at that time, which was 2009, uh, when it started. Uh, we could offer them 401K and healthcare benefits if the other companies couldn't. So we could get the workers. Uh, right now, people are wanting to go to work for $8 an hour more than we're paying them $7 an hour more than we're paying our employees without benefits because the price of everything's going up and what have you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Golden.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Speaker. Uh, Mr. Booker, you said that, uh, because you didn't get the budget that you needed, you had to let two, two positions go to pay for one. How did you decide which ones and are you gonna hire them back if you get this?
We, we did not fire anybody. I had two open positions that weren't filled, and instead of filling those positions with new employees, I divided that money amongst the employees that I already had working. I've never let anybody go because of money.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Voice vote on the current motion on the floor with the amount changed. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none opposed, the current motion and the amount with that throughout the legislation has passed. Onto the main motion on the floor, NCA 23-013. Any more discussion? Representative Hicks.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We keep, we keep speaking about the competitive salaries. How do I know what's being competitive? I mean...
I'd like to ask my supervisor up here, uh, Alan King.
Yes, sir. Mr. King.
Alan King, I've been a supervisor for Arbor Care for four years now, four and a half years. When I first started, you know, the a- a- average tree trimming salary in Oklahoma was about $18. Right now, it's up to 23.
Gotcha.
And our trimmers are making five, $6 less than that. I'm not even making $23 an hour as a supervisor. You know, you keep them training and all these, uh, things, tree companies coming up, that's, they're getting all the experienced people. And I'm left with, the, all I've got is probably three guys with five years plus experience. Everybody else is below that. And in order to get to people like that, we're gonna have to do on-the-job training, which happens every day. We've got some good guys coming up, but we can't keep up with demand from the citizens, you know, weather and everything else. We're trying to get, get these people trained, but we can't do it, you know, in a fashion that I'd like to, I'd like at least get at least three crews going with at least maybe one, two good trimmers on each crew to help with the training.
Yes, sir.
And that's the only way we're gonna do it, is get competitive people over here, those experienced.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I don't see it. I mean, we're talking competitive...
All you gotta do is do what I did. I Googled the average salary for a tree trimmer in Oklahoma.
Sir.
And it pulled it up.
Yeah. You got, it should've been presented to us.
That's all I...
You guys, you guys are, you guys are requesting it, and I'm just, I'm just asking for documentation. You keep saying competitive wages. There's nothing here to, to show it.
We can, uh, I guess, you know, all we can do is, uh, pr- produce something for you if you need it, I guess, you know, I mean...
I'm just, I'm just saying. In, in, in your, in your worksheet, it does say competitive salaries. I'm just saying, what are we comparing it to or who are we comparing it to? That's all I'm asking.
Yes, sir.